Evening, everybody. Are you all in?
Good.
We're going to go ahead and call a meeting to order. And Rick is going to lead us in the prayer and pledge.
Dear Lord, thank you so much for this day that you provided for us and the blessing we were receiving from it. Lord, we ask that blessing for each and every person here and the families they represent. Lord, we continue to lift up our prayer that you might send us rain, that the appeals might be martial, have martial for the cops and for the animals and for us. Lord, as we proceed through the business of the city of Ballinger, just give us patience and knowledge and wisdom to make decisions that will further the citizens of Ballinger and be good for each and every one of them. We pray this year then. I pray that allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor Texas flag and pledge that we can still be Texas, one and safe, under God, one and indivisible.
Okay, this time is the opportunity for the public to address counsel. Dialogue deliberation or discussion with council members on items that are not on the agenda is prohibited by law, and time for each speaker is limited to three minutes. Yes, sir.
I would just like to make a slight suggestion. When we have something going, like we had our boil water notice, Facebook is not a good means of saying it's over. If we could get that done with Nixle too, like the same way that we had the break and everything.
We didn't push a message out. It wasn't a alert, it was an advisory.
I never got one.
Advisors just go to emails.
Okay, well, that's completely useless if I don't have an email set up. I mean, that's what I'm saying. I mean, we need to... Chad didn't know we didn't have it until yesterday when I told him that it was over. And so I'm...
Well, I mean, that's something we can fix.
Yes, that's... That's what I'm... That's just what I'm asking is, can we... Next round, can we do?
We'll be honest with you.
I don't want to...
Next round, we're...
But if there is, I'd like to see it where...
Have you seen this here, Don? I'm just saying, I'm trying to be honest with myself. It's the optimism. We're trying really hard, but yeah, I appreciate it. We'll work on it, see if we can maybe see if there's a different way that we can push it out using Nixle. Though I know we tried to put it out with all media outlets again, and we're trying to come back with everything again, so when we get into those situations, it... Oh, yeah. It just feels like we're going to miss something somewhere.
Yeah.
It's cool. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right, we'll go on to the next item. City Council may hold a public hearing about the proposed 2020-2021 fiscal year budget for the city. I open the public hearing on the 2020-2021 fiscal year budget at 5:35 PM.
I have a question. Has this been published online yet?
The finished budget will be posted online.
Okay, but the one you're considering hasn't been posted online?
Didn't. It's been here. It's been posted.
Okay, I just didn't know if it was online or if we could actually access it or anything.
It will be... The adopted budget is what we're required to post.
Okay, so then is... Can you give me an idea of where we are overall on the budget then, numbers-wise compared to previous year?
No.
As far as what we're projecting or where we're at?
Right. Currents of spending for next fiscal year versus this fiscal year?
Currently, I think we're sitting about $300,000 behind where we were budgeted for for this year, so we are well in a better position than what we budgeted for. I don't have the exact number on hand. The next council meeting, obviously, this summer for prior month, and then at the end of the year, I'll have the full comparison. It's hard to say exact numbers because we don't have all the bills in yet.
And that's spending specifically the budget and spending. We will have higher revenue for next year based on what we're doing.
Yeah, for fiscal year 20, we expect to have more revenue than we do expenses.
Correct. Well, I'd say more revenue than this year is projected.
Yes, and we expect to have a reduction in the amount of sales tax for the next year, but still to have an increase in revenue. And we budgeted the budget that we presented for nomination as a balance by...
Thank you.
Anything else? Okay, if there are no others to be discussed at the public hearing, I close the public hearing on the budget at 5:38 PM. City Council may consider approval of an ordinance approving and adopting the 2021 fiscal year budget for the city. In your packet is an ordinance of the city of Ballinger approving and adopting a budget for the city for fiscal year 21. Do I have a motion to approve ordinance number 0908-2020 approving and adopting a budget for the city of Ballinger for fiscal year 2021?
I'll make that motion.
Sure.
Is there any discussion on the ordinance? Okay, at this time, we'll go ahead and take a vote, and it has to be a record vote, so I'll be asking each one of you. Mr. Ken Manley, are you for or against the ordinance, the budget ordinance?
I vote for the budget ordinance.
Okay. Rick Morris?
For.
Brian Langley?
Vote for the budget ordinance.
Mr. Mike Brennan?
I vote for.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Motion carries. Okay, at this time, City Council may hold a public hearing on proposed tax rate for the 2020 city taxes. And since this budget will raise total property tax revenue than the budget for the previous fiscal year, the city, the council must take a separate ratification vote on the budget ordinance. The ratification vote must be... I'm sorry, I'm still in the... No, I didn't close it.
Did you close the public hearing?
Yes. Yes, did I? I did.
See?
I did. So, I forget those, okay. So, since this budget will raise total property tax revenue than the budget for the previous fiscal year, the council must take a separate ratification vote on the budget ordinance. The ratification vote must be a record vote. Okay, so... At this time, I'll open public hearing.
Everybody has some time to do a total new dance.
It's different, and I'm reading. So, I open this for public hearing on tax rate for the 2020 tax year at 5:41 PM. Yes, sir.
Can you give us a basic walkthrough of how the tax rate is changing? And in doing so, can you also briefly explain how that works now since the state has changed everything?
Let's put it this way, trying to briefly explain Senate Bill 2 is not possible when in fact the state still, up to the zero hour, was still making changes to the tax code. But essentially, what we used to be able to go at before we had a... They've definitely used the new terminology for the effective tax rate, you could go up as high as eight percent before you hit the rollback rate. Now, with Senate Bill 2, we're looking at a 3.5 percent margin of increase before you hit the, from the no voter required rate to the voter approval rate, which basically is rollback rate. And then you have to figure in now the minimus rate, which is the minimus rate is a rate that allows you to raise the taxes to the level to generate $500,000. And there was an alley on this little plan that I was wanting to go to that, and then the strike scene that it related to a dollar a penny. That was too much of an increase. And so our no approval rate was 50...
54 percent.
Well, that's what we were going with, is 54 percent. What was that being?
It was 52 percent and a quarter.
Something like that. I can't remember the exact breakdown, but what we did is we sat down and we broke down various rates to look to see what rates generate what additional revenue to assist the city in being able to meet their obligations and provide services. We could have gone all the way up to 55 and some minimus numbers behind it before we would hit the rollback rate or the voter approval rate. So, in looking at that and trying to take small bites of the apple and work on projects and with what we've got going on, we decided that the 54 cent rate was the best rate to go with. It increases a little bit, but not much. And to be honest with you, with not knowing exactly what the school board or court rates were going to be, the hospital district and the county, we tried to take little snippets to try and do what we needed to just get by. And so that's how we even went through 54. It's just trying to generate a little bit of additional revenue because historically, if we do not keep up with that a little bit, we're not keeping up with the rate of inflation because even our stuff, even though our law protection is tax exempt, the cost of the unit itself has gone up. And so in order to stay to the positive side and try to reseed and establish reserves, we have to do something.
And there was no increase last year.
No, sure. There wasn't.
And that was even when other municipalities were doing massive increases because of this bill that was coming down from the Senate.
Most cities did a massive grab because it was the last big bite of the apple. TML insisted and suggested that they do not do that because it could possibly backfire in the coming legislative session that we're getting ready to go into. But we were also told by legislature that if we do use the minimus rate, they would also take that option away from us. So, all the more reason to show due regard to the taxpayer and not be agreed that we will not move to business for that. Does that...
Yes, thank you very much.
I think that maybe it's also enough that wherever we rank amongst our peer cities, there's some of our peer cities that were almost double what our proposed tax rate is. I think we're in a good position going forward without over encumbering our other taxes.
Are we increasing our revenues by the new evaluations that our tax assessors have put on? Everything's gone through the roof as far as the statistics.
We are increasing the revenues to some degree from that. We do still have frozen tax rate that we have to make into consideration as well for people who fall into that classification. So, there's some of that, that even though the property value went up, we were capped, which we don't have the youngest demographic people across the county, and our city not exempted from that either. So, our total taxable is roughly $221 million worth of property. The exact number is in the packet, and so we're... I can't remember what the exact portion of presented that is of that percent tax.
And do you... And sorry about how I'm... Do you... I'm going to do a quick one here. Is that... How much of an increase is that?
This increase is...
Yeah, 221.
3.5%.
3.5%.
The assessed value. Is it 221 million?
The assessed value, I don't have the number of what the assessed value for fiscal year 21 is off the top of my head, so I can go get it if you'd like. But I don't have that.
Yeah, actually, if it's handy.
I can read it.
If anybody else has anything, we'll ask.
Can y'all bear with me? I've got new things to say and two sheets I'm working on, so be patient with me.
No problem. And Councilman, the recent... Like I was having to go back, those figures that you're asking about over the overall property valuation, all that stuff is done from a totally different viewpoint.
Yes.
And so we don't fully keep the law that right. We take that and then we move forward to what's right to the numbers that we're dealing with.
I think I can do a little difference.
The difference was about $16 million in valuation change, which it's lost for about... Without taking a direct look at what the number of dollars we made, that increased our revenue by about $86,000.
And with all the rivalry stepping in, that number's going to change and go up to a hit next year's tax, tax profit.
Do you have any more questions? Okay, if there are others. So, if there are none that should be discussed at the public hearing, I do close the public hearing on the tax rate at 5:49 PM. And at this time, City Council may consider approval of an ordinance approving and adopting the proposed tax rate for the 2020 tax year. And in your packet is an ordinance of the city of Ballinger approving and adopting the city's tax rate for tax year 2020. Since the ordinance will adopt a tax rate that will exceed the known revenue tax rate, the motion to approve the ordinance should state precisely...
I'll make the motion we approve the ordinance.
Do I have a second?
Sure.
Okay. Is there any discussion on the tax rate? And ordinance?
I just... Every entity, whether it be a hospital board or the school board, puts... When I was on the hospital board, it was the same thing, and we're only doing this much, so everybody's doing it. And then our evaluation grew on, and at the same time, we're already getting an increase on that. And during this COVID thing, when a lot of people are... I don't know if it's a good time, as minstrels it seems on here, that everybody's doing it to do that.
Okay.
Well, we'll have to answer back to that. The thing is, we're looking at it by being the increase in the taxes, and we have not considered doing an increase to water or wastewater at this time. And there has not been a water increase since 2014, and it's been confirmed back to the net for sewage. And so we have to make up a difference somewhere. And it's either through the picture of that alarm or fees for doing business, water, wastewater, refuse, because we're going to take a 3% if on Republic's fees anyway. That's in the contract. And so that's part of what's eroded our reserves, is not taking anything additional to keep up with expenses. And so I understand what you're saying, Councilman, and I appreciate that. However, I would have to... And looking at it from where we're sitting at to do business and be willing to our obligations, we're basically pleading that everybody will work with us on this.
Okay, we'll go ahead and take a vote. And I'll do it again each...
Just a minute.
Okay.
You've already got a motion, a second, so let me go ahead and get here and call the vote.
So, Ken Manley?
I'd rather not vote for the budget ordinance.
Okay, cool. Rick Morris?
I'll be for.
Mike Brennan?
For.
Brian Langley?
Against.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, it is Brian Langley. Okay. Motion.
He said against.
He said against, yes. But motion carries. Okay. Okay. City Council may consider and authorize approval of a resolution amending the draft contingency plan.
Mayor, Council, this is something that has to be reviewed on a regular basis, and we're a little bit behind on this. It was supposed to be renewed every two years. We found that we kind of put it flat, but we talked to the powers that be at the state and our engineer firm that drew or crafted the original contingency plan. And we were advised by the state that we could go ahead and just pick up the resolution and just renew it and get it submitted to the state using the same tickers that we had used in the past and the lift levels and whatnot to kick in the different restrictions on water use. So, we would just ask that, just make y'all aware of the resolution, and that we'll be giving that sign if it is your pleasure.
Do you have a motion to approve?
So... Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries.
Thank you.
City Council may consider and approve the hiring of new employees for the city of Ballinger.
And I'll turn that over to... Sir? No, all you're doing is just telling them to be hired. We're not talking about any personal interest. We're not talking about... There's no choice. You may just tell you're hiring and vote for this, you're going to be permanent.
The other two, they are Griswold, Austin Cassidy. You get their technical nomination letter, they get that sent over. And I'll get a letter for each of you guys to review. Essentially, what it is, is a formal letter just introducing each of the nominees that we've vetted. Two of them, we did exercise our option under chapter seven to go ahead and immediately hire them to a temporary position to fill a vacancy that was necessary to keep the operations of the city on. The third one is to fill the vacancy that's in the water administration for your utility clerk position. So, the first two nominees went into the water and streets. They're going to head about between departments, but they're going to be assigned specifically to one or the other. JR Griswold is the first one. He is currently living in Hayrock, and he is planning to move into Ballinger, so he's a local, he's from here. So, if it were your pleasure, I'd like to have him in that position permanently. The second is Scott Watkins. He moved into a position with the streets department. And again, he's from local here in Ballinger. We've already hired him under that same chapter and rule. And the third is Austin Cassidy. He's working currently in the water delivery, and he's doing fantastic edits and is staying in permanent position. And then the last one that we'd like permission and we're nominating is S. Marla Hernandez, and she'll be assuming the position on your approval inside the utility clerk position for water administration.
Any questions for anyone? Got a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. City Council may consider and approve the recommendations of the scoring committee to hire an engineering firm for the Texas Community Development Lot Brand Program Contract Number 7219019 for the proposed street improvement project.
Okay. Without getting into the weeds of why we're here, some technical difficulties or issues were discovered and which required us to separate from the originally selected engineering firm. And so at the Council of Texas Department of Agriculture and our grant management advisor, we went out again for requests for qualifications, and the previous successor was not allowed to participate by state statute and by grant rule. And so that was led and opened, and the scoring committee consisting of Mayor Steemore, Director of Finance John Perry, and accounts payable or municipal clerk Blaine Ross, sat down and opened the packets. There were four vendors that submitted packets, and that was KSA, SKG, and both those are office in San Angelo. KSA is a large engineering firm that is primarily in East Texas. We had Jacob and Martin and EHP in Abilene. And after they'd gone through the... Their... Each of their packets and scoring them, we talked to our grant manager and our grant advisor, and the list was made aware to their knowledge, so they go ahead and get their paperwork ready. But the first vendor that will be talked to and negotiated with by state statute is EHP. If negotiations fall through with them on cost and timeline, it's KSA is second in line, and then Jacob and Martin, and then SKG. Statute requires that we negotiate all of our agreements and move through a certain order there, and if we hit an impasse, then we have to submit a letter to them and to our grant advisor that we're moving on to the next in line. So, we have to move down that list, one, two, three, four, not go from one to three or one to four. We have to go in a particular order. So, I would ask that the council accept the recommendations of the scoring committee and allow us to enter negotiations with EHP and our grant advisors to lead this project up and running. We're already a little behind.
Do you have a motion?
Make a motion that we... Is it basically a contract that we're extending to them or just...
Well, it's a resul... Basically, it's the grant, so we're just... We're awarding the project or engineering project as of this time to EHP.
Okay, I make that motion to award the project to EHP. Why did y'all choose them over the others?
Because they were ranked number one. The scores, the numerical scores actually wash it out by dividing it by three. EHP came out number one, and KSA number two, Jacob Martin number three, and so SKG was number four.
Based on their qualification packets that they mailed in?
No. It was a very laborious reading.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Motion carries. City Council will consider allowing use of the community center for the Howl Fest October 31st, 2020.
We're bringing this back to the table, y'all have some concerns with the COVID and all that, the lines. We can't handle, and we can't predict what is going to be left in a month. And so we're just bringing it back up, seeing if y'all would help us approve it, so that way we can get our plans start going on. We'll take extra precautions and measures. Once we start announcing it, we'll put a little block on our flyers saying, UCF.com, If it's, if our case to get above twenty, well, we're going to be requiring masks, it's all on. So we just, we just need y'all's approval on this. I mean, I know your concern basically was the line for it. I mean, it's kind of out of our control. I mean, we'll do everything we can to fix it. So.
Can you do anything with the, as far as truck or treat relocation, some of the lanes?
They have the biggest arena.
The community center?
Yeah, there's a side arena, and that's the biggest space, high ceilings, lots of property there, so they're able to spread out.
We're all spread out more.
And haunted house.
So that way they're not, you know.
Like some other small rodeo area, they go all around the border of it and it's just small.
Yeah, we'll make sure there's a good amount of space in between the stables, so that way there's not a lot.
My understanding from the last meeting was that y'all had asked him to develop a plan to possibly move truck or treat offsite to another site, as well as have a safety plan in place with details for y'all to review.
Well, I mean, it's basically, I mean, the safety is just announcing it, saying, you know, if you don't want to catch COVID, don't come out. You know, if you want to come out, wear a mask. You know, that's, that's basically the safety plan.
It's significant to have a plan in place for the lines. There's, there's that being with control outside of a plan in place.
The Council has spoken with respect to the hearing, because of what we discussed before, he's going to come up with a plan.
There's not really, I mean, we can have a direction for the line. I mean, there's no real way of directing, you know. People stay in your own groups. Everybody's going to mingle, so.
Most of the people that are kids, anyway, picking those on the.
Yeah.
So the safety, if you're talking safety wise, you know, not stepping on anything, the cords are hidden, then those are all standard, those are all SOPs for us to make sure the exits are marked and everybody is cleared. But as far as the safety, as far as the COVID is concerned, we'll take the measurements like everybody else has been doing. We'll notify everybody appropriately. We'll keep it on social media, we'll log on radio, we'll put it in the newspaper, we'll go whatever outlets. And then if they have any questions about that, they can always contact us. I think our view now is that because COVID is a little bit more informational forward, and now a lot of people are knowledgeable about how to stay safe, I think that is, you know, a good decision for them to make. If they don't feel comfortable because of the COVID, I don't think they'll come out. But as a community, I think it's a good event. We're hoping that they will, just because it's a good event for the kids. But we will take every measurement, safety and otherwise COVID related. Have y'all considered, since it opens on both sides, maybe having them come in, like the different lines coming in at opposite ends, so there's not that whole long line of kids all us together, maybe making two lines?
Well, I don't know what we have planned inside yet.
Right, we're trying to make it thematic, so it changes every year. The haunted house last year was similar, where there's tree stops on the inside, which has not been done before. So kids were allowed to come in, but we also separated them in about groups of ten, you know, before COVID. So we did that just so that for the safety of everybody concerned going through and stopping at those tree stops wasn't generating up the lines. So if we have two entry points, we have to literally split the community center in half and have another separate walkway. And that would, I think, be a lot more confusing for those of us that work it, to try and get people out safely if we have to. We were very cognizant of making sure that the pathway was wide enough for anybody who had a stroller, anybody who was in a wheelchair. And it was widening now so that it would accommodate larger groups of people. So we could, you know, we definitely invite you, if you approve it, we can definitely invite you all to do a walkthrough, so you can see the plan yourself. Sometimes you don't know until it's actually happening, but we don't mind doing that even.
And when we get closer to the layout, then everything we can present to City Council.
Mayor, Council, what I think I'd like to recommend is that you, I think they're trying to hang on to the facility for the day, just in case, if it's go or not go. I would, I would be comfortable in recommending that y'all approve it based on the contingent that, that they come to this council again with a well-defined layout with a couple of options. Redundancy is the, is the best word with any kind of pandemic or anything else that's going on. And so I would like, you know, I would like to see is we go ahead and hold that for you, and, but you come back and you give us a couple of different options, what's it going to look like?
Okay.
You know, go ahead and think outside the box, because this Halloween is totally different than any Halloween before. You know, we've not done COVID Halloween or Halloween COVID, you know. You know, so it's, it's anybody's guess, but I think if y'all, if we go ahead and allow them to move forward with this, and then that way go ahead and get that facility secure, and then they have to come back and.
Sorry, so we can have that whole week locked out specifically, because it took us about that long to set it in half. So as we are progressing, you're all welcome to come by and just take a look as we are building it. You're welcome to do that. And if you happen to see something that is worthy of a conversation, say, hey, maybe that's not going to work, then we love to hear at that time, so that we can build on to it, so.
Well, I'd like to see y'all come back and report it with a couple of different shows, just that we'll sit back and look at it, y'all been here much longer than I, and so that you can, you know, you know how things move and shake in and out of the wind, dominant wind, and what the weather characteristics have been in the past October.
Yes, sir.
And kind of give us a couple, three different options to lay out and make sure that we do our due diligence to.
And maybe that we flop it. We may flop it where the haunted portion will be in the arena, where there's a lot more exits, wider bay, big doors.
And you control the volume of people that go through the haunted section?
Yes, we do.
And also with the understanding that if anything changes with the gambling, or if they mandate something different, then would it take them to a penalty to have to wear a mask because of increase in COVID cases? Or if the government mandates something else, maybe they have to.
Welcome to the one line.
Please.
Yes.
The, I think one of the things, you know, for me, it doesn't have to be a verbatim as to what, you know, this one to take place. Just possible, a general overview of what, you know, each area of the arena.
We can, we can post it up if you'd like. That way you can have an overshot of the building from the top down, so you can actually see where it's going. We can do that.
On a second note, is the school going to do their senior high school?
We can not hear it.
Oh, yeah, not hurt. I'll check tomorrow and see, but about the same time as well, one day or two day. Normal, yes.
Normal is the weekend before.
Yeah.
But if they want to merge it with ours, we welcome them. They would have a lot more people coming, and if we merge it, we might be able to help them too.
Yeah, I think that would be a good idea. The only problem being, maybe I'd like to go and fundraise, produce a, you know, station of it, where that's, that's what they're doing.
Right, and we can always designate a section for them. It could be a big, huge, hence the name fest. You know, it could be another section where the citizens know that's a fundraiser portion for the students. But maybe that way we don't have to separate events, that could, that could be a lot bigger because it's really up to them. We don't want to take anything away from them.
I took my kids last year, and it's a fairly straight line, so you're not getting more than a couple of families close enough to, you know, at the time, but it's not, it's not a big group.
Closer.
Yeah, so it's, it's not.
The state's was really.
And the kids look forward to it. I mean, there aren't too many, but it's a, it's a good program, it's a good thing. We just have to be careful with them.
Yes, sir.
Putting ourselves in a position where people come, come back for us and say, well, you approved this, you knew, you knew good and well what was going to happen.
Well, we'll be, we'll be prepared if the shift of the temperature in the city and the state that says, hey, now everybody masks up or we end up having to cancel. As long as we know in advance how to recover, that is really the element of communication all the way around. But we know that's going to be a shift, and we can communicate that out. But if we at least get the permission to start, because it's such a huge undertaking, it takes quite a while to build, so if we can just get the approval, then we can go and come back to you and give you more clear updates.
I had to tell you a motion that we approve the use of allowing the use of the community center for the Howl Fest October 31st, 2020, contingent upon the recommendation of our city manager.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. In case of any. At this time, we'll hear a presentation with the police department on Ballenger Night Outset for October 6th, 2020. It'll be the same thing. Ballenger Night Out is on the sixth. We spun off the National Night Out program, where we're supposed to be going out with the community and getting to know our citizens, and the citizens get a chance to get to know us. We've done this for three years now, been very, very successful. Last year, we did it at Seventh Street Baptist Church, and they were gracious enough to allow us to use their facility. All the first responders attended that, they all have informational booths, and it is quite a fair, and there are quite a few people at that one, too. If we use a much larger arena, we probably would be able to accommodate that spatial issue that we have with COVID. So I would probably just piggyback on the Howl Fest. If we can possibly get maybe the community center, that may be the better location since space-wise and cover, we'll be able to do that. I believe the fire trucks. So if the fire trucks can get in there, they can still do the chair picker, I mean, it'll be a lot of fun, but we'd like to have that permission to do the same thing with Ballenger Night Out. Do you want a motion to approve?
Seven.
Ten seconds, all in?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, at this time, City Council may consider and approve the minutes of the August 17th, 2020 meeting?
I have just one correction. Our actual position, we have the very first line of the third paragraph on this September 18th. There's no more. The only thing that I noticed is just to sit down.
Anything else?
With that being said, I make a motion to approve the minutes with correction.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, so the Council, City Council will hear an updated financial report from John Perry for the month ending August 31st, 2020.
So we put enough version up as we're going to have revenues, and we're behind in that spending, so that's good on both ends. But predicting at the break now, we could end up as much as a hundred point five percent being on than what we projected for revenues for this year 2020. And we could be between ninety-three and ninety-six percent of what we budgeted, so we'll have a surplus regardless, unless we go up wild and start spending on crazy in the next fourteen days, so. As far as the way that August 31st, a motion to approve.
He's over here shaking his head. He's.
So year-to-date actual for revenues, and as far as totals go, was, we're saying that's three million, six hundred eighty-three thousand, two hundred seventy dollars and change. That's a hundred fifteen point three percent ahead of where we are supposed to be for this point in time. As far as expenses goes, they totaled up year-to-date at two million, six hundred seventy-one thousand, six hundred forty-four dollars and ninety-seven cents. And we have budgeted three million, one hundred eighty-three thousand, five hundred twenty dollars, so we're at eighty-three point six six percent of that. Is there any specific department that you guys want to hear any more details about, or is it okay with just the general synopsis of where we're sitting?
Okay, with the general synopsis.
If that's it, then.
I would just like to see a financial report.
This is, no, this is the.
That's the book.
Yeah, so this is the financial report through August 31st.
Because I'd like to be able to have the opportunity to study and look at the different, what's going on in each category, each place, and see where you're coming from. I would like to be able to see that myself, and then have an opportunity to be able to develop questions and stuff that we may have, he may have, I may have.
Right.
To what expenditures have been made where and why.
Right, and that's definitely something that going forward, I would be, when we're able to get a copy.
Because we shouldn't be getting a financial report every month.
Right, and that's going forward, the plan is, I've, in the last thirty days, or not even twelve, thirty days yet, since I got hired, I just, it's been figuring out where the eggs are lying, where the eggs need to come from, so.
Well, I understand, you've been under pressure, you've been under the gun, had a lot going on, you've worked hard, and I appreciate the effort you've put in so far, but I'd just like to see this kind of really before a council meeting, a financial report, so if we had any questions about it, we could be specific.
Yes.
What we could possibly do is put that in mind, or just one thing that we were more concerned about, anything else in the very beginning, that we weren't getting a financial report at all, period. And that was a big question to make the decisions that we need to make. What I would recommend is presenting or visiting our online financial report for the first meeting, then we discuss and talk about it, do any discussion on the second meeting. I know it is everybody time to look at it, and reading the hand that everyone are electronically, physically, whichever.
With all due respect, I mean, you know, thirty days, sixty days.
Right.
And, and we're very much aware of the sensitivity of the situation, and we don't want to dwell on, dive off into that. But right now, our focus was getting this accomplished.
Right.
And the timelines that were set out by state statute on tax study and budget, and definitely, y'all, y'all's concern, they're definitely heard and received, and we're going, that's just one of the many things that are on our checklist to check up and make sure that we did with y'all, and make sure that y'all stand well informed from this point forward. We were just, we were, I mean, we've had one inferno after another this last sixty days.
I understand, I understand where you're coming from, too, like Southie, that immediately let someone forget.
No.
Or overlook, so that we can.
That's also what we're also coming from, and I understand, and I appreciate the work you've been putting in, because you've been under the gun, you've had more to deal with than you can count. Between those two, I mean, y'all have done an amazing job, and I appreciate it.
Yes, thank you. I think your suggestion was good, though.
Yeah.
Got the first meeting of the month.
Give them a time, and we'll leave, we can call them, ask questions, and then we can have a final discussion, or, or even a minor review on the second meeting. Got it? If everybody has it in their hands, they don't have to sit here to the meeting and try and look at it.
Well, that's a good point.
That takes a lot of time.
Yeah, it's six hundred, the way it currently sits and lines out, almost seven hundred line items to go through, envisioning revenue and expenses, so it gives us synopsis of what the percentage is per line item, it breaks that down in that report.
You know, even, even with that, as you said, we don't all. You know, even, even with that being said, we don't always necessarily have to have a line item report every month. It might be a good, like a report, something along those lines. Those, I mean, each line item is pretty lengthy unless something really out of sync. Then we need to find out that before we, before we know that.
The way this stuff is presented when it comes out, it had just a departmental, so that's why I asked if there was a specific department you wanted to know more about now. As far as each individual transaction, there's no way that we can.
No.
Have all that till we get digitized.
Me departmental is, is sufficient enough, you know, unless we go back every quarter to name a little more detail. But we don't, we don't need to get to the point to where we might remage, but we don't need to be ignoring it either.
Correct.
So, same.
Suzanne, you have something?
Yes, ma'am. Uh, just a quick question on your show, on your financials. Do you have a equipment replacement plan like three to five years um to include computers, things of that nature?
So moving forward into the budgeting way it is in the future, um, I do have a specifically addressing just computers. So we're working in that redepartment of technology assessment and to cover some of that. And now we're still trying to determine the route that we're gonna go with the next year, couple of years um, for an IT servicing company. Um, we want to make sure that we're balancing the cost obviously, but also looking at each individual offering of what service they can afford or provide us to what we can afford. And they're very diverse in the way that the contract reads out, so we're looking at that. And some of them have equipment replacement programs built into their contracts for others. It's all on our shoulders, so, but.
But we are looking into that, that is something that is in form, just because I've seen some wear and tear and they just keep tearing.
So if you don't have a plan in place to repurchase, to replace those equipment, you'll never get anything done. It's difficult to do that.
Um, on some of our higher dollar items, like the moving forward, we'll be looking at the animal control boxes. Instead of having to absorb immediate cost, we do have one provider that can give us the option to set up a budgeted amount every single year. And at the end of that term, it's a lease buyout. So we neither own the, the equipment or they remarket it for us and we just keep that same dollar amount every year and they replace it with new technology, so. And we can use that on a very diverse range of equipment that the city uses, so.
Do you have anything? Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen.
Before we. Uh, council, mayor, um, and the audience, uh, we brought the oil notice a while ago and we were asked several questions as to how we got to the situation where we had a, had to even have a oil notice. And um, to be completely honest with you, what we've discovered is, is that we don't have just one water system. We have two complete water systems. And as poly lines have been laid and placed historically in years past, uh, the old AC lines and O lines were not kept and sealed and abandoned. And so the leak that we encountered at Avenue B and 4th, I remember correctly, 4th Street. Uh, the gentleman that called that in noticed the leak at the corner, the intersection there. And when the crew got to digging and started looking into what the leak was causing the leak, uh, they exposed an old saddle tap and the saddle tap was all but gone. It was rust-hoping ends. And so when we disturbed the dirt, so went the tap and so went the AC line. Uh, it was compromised and was, they tried to cover it and clamp it, but that AC line was already compromised and kept running and running and running. So they immediately started trying to hit every valve that was visible to the human eye and no relief. And to this day, we still don't know where or if there's a valve for that particular AC line. And we were in such a bind and people were not happy that they didn't have water that we patched, we had to send a crew member up at 5:30 in the morning to have them to get the pipe and the other pieces that we needed to make the repair. Uh, so we got the system back up and running. So essentially, we recharged both systems. Um, hence part of the problem that has been experienced uh over time because these poly lines were laid three or four cities' managers ago. And so you have AC lines that have been catching water and, and water getting stagnant in there and then being sucked back into the poly heart of it and then coming out the faucet in a Skittles rainbow color assortment and oftentimes very offensive to the nasal passages. Uh, so that's why we flush at certain fire heights to flush and purge the stuff out of the system. Well, now that we know what the problem is and what we've discovered, uh, part of this project that we did with engineers this evening uh in doing the water of the second street and my Avenue D and things like this, is that when we peel the asphalt, we're gonna be exposing the infrastructure and replacing water main and sewer main. It is not gonna be an easy feat. I've talked to three different engineers, one of which I'm related to. He says it's not entirely uncommon uh for cities to experience this, but you have to take your time and do it right. And that's what we intend to do. Uh, in order to make somebody that's gonna hobbly, but not probably, there's going to be some service interruptions and we're gonna see what gets cut off when we do off what they call a hot cut and we cut into it and seal it off and then we'll see what we're impacting, if we're impacting any of it. Because it may already be picked up on the poly line, we don't know. Uh, but we'll be moving forward with this and that's part of the thing that we're gonna have to do is that we're, what John was talking about, some of the surplus funds that we have in water, the water distribution and wastewater, is that we're going to go ahead and pre-purchase water mains, sewer mains and valves that we can out of this budget in preparation for when we kick off the paving portion of this project so that when we rip, we go ahead and get through the base, start running our new lines one piece at a time. Some of the lines over off of Second and back off of B and back in that area are really small lines. They're gonna have to be expanded to six and four inch lines. Some of the six inch lines are gonna be light in order to uh handle new uh fire heights. Because in some of those areas over there, when you get off of Second and back in there, if there's no fire heights in close proximity to structures, that's not cool with me. Uh, especially if it was my house that was ablaze. So uh, these things that we're looking at are also going to assist us with our ISO rates, which impacts your homeowner's policies. And so uh, we're looking at all these things and we're gonna be taking this better. We're gonna, we're gonna be slow, but not too slow. We're gonna have meetings with the engineer and the grant advisor and start formulating our plan and how we're gonna carry this out by ripping and then relaying. In the midst of that, doing the, the infrastructure repair. And so I just wanted to make everybody aware of why it drained the whole system. We could, it was directly off of a, of a, was that 16 inch line? And so trying to stop that flow of water, it just wouldn't happen. Uh, and so there was no magic valve to protect the south side of town from this, from, or it just drained the whole system. And we were able to shut the valve off at the elevated storage so that we could backfill the Thirwell. And that being the way, when we got the patch done, we would be able to go ahead and recharge the system. It just wasn't free flowing all the time because that was, that was a lot of water we lost.
Yes, sir.
And then you were just talking about having to work through all this with engineers, but is there any type of projected date on when the project will start at this point?
As soon as I make the phone, well, I gotta send the letters off to the grant advisor and we'll mail the engineer firm, in fact, I'll call them, I'll do that tonight. Call them with the note because we're planning on trying to have a meeting with our grant advisor, the engineers and staff here uh, as early by the end of the week, if not for a call next week. Um, when I'm a bit slow, I mean, I'm not gonna drag my feet getting the project. I mean, we're gonna take our time and methodically look at the infrastructure as we're going because I don't even know if we blow that, and I've gotta be, and those hot cuts are not cheap.
Unfortunately, no, there's not enough else we can, we may not be able to predict.
So.
Until we can drop some valves in.
I just want to be completely transparent as to what we're dealing with in the infrastructure. And like with any government entity, you have seen and unseen infrastructure. And our water and wastewater lines and those valves are unseen, so they don't, people just don't pay attention. They drive over them all day, every day. They just, nobody pays any attention to that infrastructure until something goes wrong.
Is there any kind of documentation on the history of what has happened within the city? The breaks, lines that were lost, lines that are found, is anything like that? And then on the other hand, if that being said, is the engineering firm at this rate going to kind of maybe remedy some of that?
We have line, info, line data from the previous comprehensive community plan, plan that was built, developed, plan that was done. Uh, that's the other grant we're going out for to read up all that stuff with the census and everything. And so we do have, and there are those binders that were, I had binders scattered all over this and I finally found a map for that area and saw what we had done with the poly lines. And I didn't understand why I was looking at an AC line when the maps tell me that there's poly lines. Well, the map didn't show me the old lines. And that's the stuff that we're taking with the GIS system that I'm bringing on board is because we'll be able to track that old data, this is where the old lines were at and this is where the new lines are at. And even to the point that when we do have the ground open and we're putting that stuff in there and capped in the old ones and putting the new ones in, we take a picture. And that picture will show us the date, time, GPS coordinates, everything about that piece of pipe that went in the ground. And so that way we'll have that historical, you know, it'll be the, the, the information that after we're long gone. And so I appreciate everybody's uh patience with us during that whole uh event. Uh, we hope not to have any of those, none of hope, but uh we will do better at, at making sure everybody's aware of when we come out of those if we were to have another one, but uh. But anyway, that's all I have.
And, and I would just like to add to that and say that I'm very appreciative to our guys who have already worked all day long. And then when they discovered the leak, they continued working all through the night to the next morning and into part of the next day, nonstop, working um, for their community to make sure that the interruption was not any longer than it had to be. So I would like to just voice that to the public that I'm very appreciative of that and um, and, and I appreciate everyone's understanding and patience. And I know that some people were not quite so understanding, but it's just something that uh I, I feel like our city guys worked very hard for their community and they should be commended for that publicly.
Every department came out, their, uh, street was out there, uh, water treatment, water distribution, sewer. Uh, what was even nice is I got a phone call from a gentleman and I don't have his name that worked in the water infrastructure in another municipality, often another part of the state that lives here now. I have tools, if you need me, call me, I'll come help. And so we had several people in the community that are community members that even offered to spell our guys if it, if it were needed, so I mean, you, you don't see that everywhere.
That's a true sense of community.
Yeah.
They did an outstanding job.
Yeah, they did. I'm, I'm very, very proud of them for that. So that is our conclusion. So at this time, we will adjourn our meeting, our meeting will take a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second. Kim?
Kim, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, meeting is adjourned, thank you guys, y'all have a wonderful evening.